All right, guys, welcome to San Diego Community Power Board of Directors Meeting. It's November 18th and it's just after 5:00 PM. It's good to see everyone and let's get started. So Kimberly, did you want to take a roll call?
Yes, San Diego representative. Here. La Mesa representative.
Here.
Imperial Beach representative.
Gina here.
Chula Vista representative.
Padilla here.
And Sinetis representative.
I'm here.
We have a forum.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we don't have a report from closed session. Assistant General Counsel, we don't have anything to report from closed session since we didn't have one, right?
Correct.
All right, are there any changes to the posted agenda? Item 10 has been pulled by staff and is going to be moved to the December, regular December meeting. Any other changes to the posted agenda from my colleagues? All right, and now this is the opportunity for public comment, opportunity for members of the public to address on the board and any items that are not, that are within our jurisdiction but are not on our agenda. Kimberly, do we have anybody that would like to address the board?
There's no one raising their hands at this time and there's no written comments.
All right, anybody, anybody that's attending, would you like to give, give this agency any public comment then on items not on our agenda? All right, moving on to the consent calendar, we have three items on the consent calendar. Any, any, any member want to pull items on the consent calendar or want to consider the entire consent calendar in one motion?
Yeah, I will move the consent agenda. I just have a quick comment on item number three.
Perfect.
Okay, I just want to thank staff for all of your watchdog work, so to speak, on the disadvantaged communities green tariff and it being an exceptional watchdog on the cost allocation mechanism proceedings as we move forward. With that, I move the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Director Montgomery Step. Do we have a second on that motion?
One second.
Oh, well, we have a second by Director Tadina. Good to see you, Serge, and so let's vote. Megan?
Okay, alternate director, Humora, how do you vote?
Hi.
Board member DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, hi.
Board member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote? Chair Masca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
I keep on confusing you and Megan and Kimberly.
That's okay.
I don't know what to call on, sorry. Or you guys are alternating tasks, just to confuse me.
We're a team.
All right, so, all right, perfect, let's go on to the next item, which is information reports and updates. And we have the first item, number, item number four, operations and administration report from our interim chief executive officer, Bill Carnahan.
Hey, thank you, thank you. I have, first of all, item staff 13, CDC.
No, it's really hard to hear you. I don't know if it's the microphone there or something. It sounds like you're speaking in a cup.
It does.
Or maybe get closer.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, sorry. Now you probably can't see me, I'm at the office. At the meeting, so bear with me and let me know if you can hear. But my advisory committee began discussions about potential impacts they might have for the addition of two additional members. If you can recall the appointments to the advisory committee for two members chosen for the committee by each of the cities. So they have 10 members now and two new members.
It's really hard to, you're breaking up, Bill, so it's really hard to hear you. I don't.
Is that any better?
That's a little bit better.
I don't know what to do. Talk louder, sorry.
Or, or if you have a headset, that, then they also cure the problem.
Let me just try and. So they were facing the prospect of going from 10 to 14 until the discussion was around, is there some practical limit to the effectiveness of the size of the committee? So they debated various options in terms of, you know, sticking back to one member per city or one primary, one secondary. Finally came to the conclusion that you'd be receiving from them next, the next meeting to vote on implementation. But really what they said was, they wanted to go ahead and add the four new members so they'd go up to 14, with the understanding that if there are any more members added to SDCP, that perhaps they should consider going to a member and alternate form. They're not proposing that at the present time, but I just wanted to let you know that they thought about that and we appreciate the fact that we're trying to put in place what works best for them and I think they concluded that. And I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming at the next meeting, so. With that, I'm just saying that this is really the last report, last board meeting where we're going to have holidays starting, or start in Thanksgiving. And, you know, that's a time when friends and family get together and have all kinds of fun and enjoy their companionship with one another. And the last thing they're going to think about is what's going on at SDCP. So I thought maybe I might want to just give you a capsule because it's also appropriate that a year ago is when we actually started in earnest to staffing up to become fully operational as SDCP. And since that time, a year later, we've actually grown to 13 staffers and still growing. And at the same time, we're showing customers and members a little bit biased to, I think we have a lot to be proud of. They're going to receive a financial report that says revenues are up, expenses are down. Finance committee received a report on the annual audit that gave us a really a glowing report. In the power resource area, we meet needs of state requirements such as resource adequacy and RPS, while at the same time, meeting our orders of 50% based, 100% stretch for customers, which I think is commendable that we're offering a superior product. Also, legislative regulatory, we have become very active in that area, both in terms of what happens at the PUC and what at the legislature. And Laura has worked very effectively and other managers staff, they have been very active at CalCCA. You know, we're one of the larger CCAs in California, so we need to carry our weight and participate in proportion to that. And that's been very effective as well. In terms of customer interaction, we have a team that works diligently at the areas of billing and collection, opt-outs and trying to explain to people why they shouldn't opt out. And also assuring a proper rate application, something you don't think about, but when new customers get transferred over, if our rates are not exactly the same as SDDB, someone has to step in and figure out how to correct that problem to the benefit of the customers. And so we have a group that's doing that. There's also a program development that we ran out and to realize all along that what we, what we offer compared to perhaps customize our program around what the individual will remember. You don't have to develop a program to spread it like peanut butter over all the jurisdictions. Like we're going to be much more targeted, much more selective in terms of providing what you all want to have as citizens. We need consumer education to let people know who we are and what we can provide to support us. So we really have accomplished a lot over this last year. I also say that the team is getting great support and dedication by the board members, by CAC, by staff, and also by the citizens. Just telling you that coming up, a couple of important things to look forward to is that we are planning this, planning early January. Only a few months and I think that's an important effort. We're going to start rate discussion. Time of year, our rates and that's a great deal of staff analysis of it so far. We'll need to start it in January for the. Discussion because there are policies. Try to show you options and economics and let you all decide what's best for this organization. That's going to be an important task. We will also, along with you, probably welcome new members. We have two new members. And so we'll be trying to provide orientation for those board members so that when they come onboard in December, they will have an idea of what we're all about, what we're doing. Hopefully from the timing of her seat, so we're looking forward to doing that. Phase three will be starting after the first year. It's the leadoff year and so we'll have bragging rights for a little while and we're looking for that. That's going to be a tremendous effort, hundreds of thousands of customers coming onboard during that timeframe. And it's expected to be protected around. So you can see, we've had an interesting year. We've got a lot of challenges ahead of us. But I can tell you that we expect next year to be hectic and as rewarding as last year. So I wanted to be able to say that before we actually get too far down the line, one year and blow up again, okay?
Thank you, Bill. It's an excellent report. And any of my colleagues have any questions for Bill? Did want to note that Bill is in our new office at Point Loma, so that's, that's great. Though we may have, we may have a Wi-Fi issue there.
Yeah, I'll look into that before the next meeting. I'm very sorry for that.
No, 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 that's, it's a, I, when I, when I was down there the other day, I saw that the cell reception was weak down in that area. So that's probably, that's probably why. Anyways, any, any questions for Bill? All right, so let's move on to item number five, receive. Megan, do we have any, or Kimberly, do we have any comment, public comment on item number four?
There's no written public comments and there's no hands raised at this time.
All right, let's move to item number five, which is receive and file treasurer's report for 2022 fiscal year to date, period ending September 30th, 2021, and Eric Washington's up.
Good evening, Chair Directors. I'm Dr. Eric Washington and I'll be presenting the treasurer's report for our first quarter end period as of September 30th, 2021 for fiscal year 2022. Advance the slide, please. So I'd like to point out that we continue along a positive trajectory when we look at our actual results compared to our budget in the net, in the area of net revenue, where we came in about 14.8%, 14.8 million over our budgeted amount, which represented about 14.8 million. Our operating budget, I'd like to point out a typo in the third bullet point on the slide. Our operating expenses were actually 2% over what we budgeted and most of that was allocated to our energy costs. So overall, the results, we reported net revenue of 17.9 million, 94.2 million in total operating expenses, which landed us in the positive and the black to the tune of 17.3 million. So the bar chart underneath the table is a depiction of where we landed with the blue bar indicating the actual results compared to the orange bar, which was the budget. Next slide, please. And again, continuing along the positive results compared to our projections, as you can see in the table, the bar chart, we came in over 1.8 million, what was projected for net revenue. Compared to the pro forma, we actually came in one, about 1% below the budgeted expenses compared to the pro forma, which landed us at about 3.1 million over net, our net position for the first quarter of fiscal year 2022. Approximately 20, just under 24 million. So we're doing really good from a fiscal standpoint through the end of our first quarter. We're going into sort of the off-peak season. We're hopeful that these trends will continue to either be on par with what we budgeted for as well as what we projected as we go forward. So with that, that concludes the treasurer's report. Now pass it back over to you, Chair Masca.
All right, you were able to deliver some really great news, so that's good.
Thank you.
It's a holiday gift, so let's go to my colleagues. Any questions for Dr. Washington? Megan or Kimberly, do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no written public comments and there's no hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to number, item number six, update on marketing and public relations, and that is our Director of External Relations, Rita De La Fuente.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Chair. Hello, Directors. My name's Rita De La Fuente and I'll be presenting our phase three residential enrollment, marketing and public relation strategy. Next slide. I just wanted to remind everyone briefly of what we learned from our phase two commercial campaign. Overall, it was a successful campaign in driving awareness. We learned that our most successful tactics were social media, radio and print. So we know that paid media is really important in elevating our brand and promoting our, and promoting awareness. We also learned that our partnerships were extremely successful in driving awareness and I'll touch on those later. And finally, we learned that education is still very necessary and will be necessary through phase three. And I believe that we are in a great position for this campaign. Not only have we phased two to learn from, but we have all of the CCAs before us that have gone through this process and even a lot of our staff members who have been through this and can tell us what's worked and what hasn't. Next slide. So currently, we're working on messaging and that's been with the help of our experts at Civilian and also with some behavioral research from Sea Change Institute. So what we've learned from this message testing is that clean energy messaging layered with our other benefits has been, showed, it's shown support across all demographics. So we're really happy about that. And we've also learned that people want more information. So that just means that we need to keep our information up to date and point people towards our website whenever we can. We also did some very high-level basic concept testing and our two creative concepts tested very well. We have the My Reasons concept, which will be a testimonial from someone in the community and the Oh Yeah! And concept, which creates the feeling of being in a conversation between neighbors or family members. Next slide, please. Here's our media mix. So this is a list of what we used in the phase three campaign and then we added on to it. So for our local publications, we increased our cultural diverse publications as well as smaller community newspapers. We also added Nextdoor into our social media mix. Nextdoor is a social platform where neighbors can speak to each other, share information based on their zip code. And we've learned from other CCAs that this is a must to have a presence in. We've also introduced an outdoor advertising element that will include billboards and convenience store posters. And so we feel with, with these additions, we'll really be able to get in front of more audiences from different angles. Next slide, please. So this is our rollout strategy. So technically, the campaign's going to start in December for those first residents that will begin enrollment in January. So in December, they'll, they'll be receiving the required notifications. But we'll have our official launch region-wide in mid-January. We'll start our city-specific media a week prior to the enrollment month and then run through that month and then three weeks after. So each city will have two full months of paid media. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, partnerships have been very successful in driving engagement. So first of all, we want to continue to promote the Power 100 Champions program. We, what we'd like to do is highlight those Power 100 Champions during our residential enrollment. We feel that that brings a level of trust and relatability to people when they see a business that they know that has become a Power 100 champion. Also, we're working with the Padres for the next season. We have some exciting things that we've been talking about there. And also, we've reached out to some community organizations for some potential collaborations. Next slide. Finally, this is our public relations and outreach strategy. Really, this has been ongoing. But officially, we'll launch the PR and outreach strategy in January with press releases that will announce the launch of the residential enrollment. So we'll reach out to regional, state and national outlets for that. We're also creating a partner toolkit, so all of you as directors, as well as our community advisory committee members and any other ambassadors that want to help us share our stories, will receive an email with several links to our assets. So you'll receive fact sheets, photos, logos, social media examples that you can share with your networks and we'd appreciate it if you'd do so. We are also wanting to increase our presence at local events. Really, I have to tell you all how proud I am of our team. Every weeks, I've been here for about six weeks. Every week, people have either been presenting to groups, interviewing for podcasts or articles or volunteering for local community events. So I'm very, very grateful to our team for being so engaged in the community and I'm so happy that the community is reaching out and wanting our presence and wanting to learn more. Finally, at the end of the residential enrollment, we look forward to sharing the combined impact of all five city launches. So right now, we're researching creative ways to do that and how to reveal our, our region's progress with this phase three enrollment. We're also talking about how do we keep, keep people engaged beyond the enrollment phase. So with that, we're just, we're very excited about this campaign. We're ready for it. I'm here for questions tonight and always. I'm so pleased. Don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. You guys are doing an awesome job. By the way, I like your picture too. I think it's a newer one. But that, your back, your backdrop there, it's really cool.
Oh, I think I tried to change it up.
All right, so, but you guys have been doing an awesome job and very, very visible in the communities as well, so thank you. I do have a couple of comments. The partnerships, I think, I said this a couple of times, I think the partnerships are amazing and they really do allow us to kind of, to tell our story and then picky back off of these other regional players that have a lot of credibility. And so I think that's good, like Illumina, the airport Padres, especially Padres. And now, now I think it's cool, it would be good to, to find those kind of, those organizations like the Illumina, like the Padres and each one of the member cities that, that, that really kind of allow people to not only, when they see it, they see, they kind of, you know, from an Encinitas or La Mesa or Imperial Beach, you kind of, you see it and it's kind of regional. But there are, there are also kind of companies that we can partner with or organizations that we can partner with in, in our towns that, that really conjure up local for, for a lot of our towns. And so I'd be happy to work with you as the representative for Encinitas and I'm sure others in other member agencies would be, would help working with you to kind of really identify organizations that have that kind of credibility, just like an Illumina on the regional level. What's really cool in Encinitas that, that really tells that, that story, that same story that we're telling on the regional level, but local. So I think that's cool.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. Yes, ideally for, for each city, we'd like to focus in on that city-specific business or businesses that are true champions in that community.
All right, and then when we're doing paid advertisement around the time that we're launching each of the, the member cities, are we using some of the data that we basically, that we are collecting or have received through Calpine or, or anybody else to understand how we basically message in a way that, 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 that people are going to stay with us and they're not going to opt out? You know, so I, I think that there have been a lot of studies and work done around the, the whole kind of opt-out and how, how do you keep customers, you know, with you? And so just wondering, are we tapping into that resource in understanding actually when we're doing, however, we're kind of reaching out through paid advertisement or anything else, but around that kind of launch that we're, we're, we're informed by this, this work has been done, this resource?
Right, that is, that is part of the great relationship that we have with Calpine and also a lot of our team that have been through this before. So the, the current messaging is really based on what can people relate to and feel comfortable with a new concept for. So I suspect that, that, that what you're talking about, like keeping people into the program and maintaining that engagement will be something that will continue throughout the year and beyond.
Right, all right, perfect. Any questions for Rita? For my colleagues? Kimberly or Megan, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
There's no written comments and there's no hands raised at this time.
All right, raise your hand if you want to speak to this really interesting, amazing item. All right, once, twice, gone. All right, let's move on to number, thank you, Rita, let's move on to item number seven and this is update on power resources and that is Mr. Byron Bosberg. Finally, Byron, you're not last.
I know, make, we're mixed up a little bit just to keep you guys guessing. But good evening, Chair and Directors. Good to see you all. We'll keep it, keep it relatively brief, I think, tonight. Wanted to follow up, first of all, on our update from last month. I know we discussed the, the year ahead RA filing, that's resource adequacy, the, the capacity products that we have to show every, every year for the following year. And as I mentioned before, there's a local requirement that goes out, you know, three years. So that, that was due on November 1st and, and so we basically spent all of October getting that, getting that ready and transacting and turning over every stone we could find and then some. So as I mentioned, you know, we anticipated the possibility of not being able to acquire all of the local San Diego resources we need for 2022 and 2023. Again, a number of factors go into that, you know, largely that, that, you know, with the three-year requirement that SDGNE had contracts for all those resources in 2022, a couple of years ago. You know, when they filed last year and we worked them to, to acquire some, but, you know, weren't successful in, in getting the full, the full balance. So we did end up filing a waiver on November 1st for a share of our 22 and 23 requirements. But as I mentioned, 2024, we've met those requirements. So kind of going forward, you know, we, we expect to, to be well-positioned and continue to be well-positioned on, on the, the resource side, especially with RA and local RA. And we're still, still, you know, we're working actively to clean up those positions as well, right? Just because we're, we're short on 2023 now, you know, we have plenty of time to, to get there between now and 2023 itself. So I'm still, still working actively and I do also just want to give a shout out to, to my team as, as well. I think October ended up being quite a, quite a flurry of a month. So both Ian and Carlos, who joined us in July, you know, were working all hours, the day, day and night and really hustling to get, you know, we, we gave it our best and then really did, you know, leave it all on, on the floor, so to speak. So, so we did make that filing. I can't go into too many of the details, but we're happy to share the, the public version of the filing with you or discuss, take some questions now or discuss later. But that's the, the update there. And then on the other side, you know, as most of October was spent on that RA filing and the resources involved, you know, we've kind of spent the last couple of weeks now. I'd say digging ourselves out, but just kind of getting caught up on, on all the other things that we've got going on and trying to close things out. So we should have a number of exciting things to, to share in the December board meeting, you know, around resources and, and the like. So that's really the only update I have at this point, but again, looking forward to, to some more updates next month and happy to take questions on, on RA as well.
All right, and then with a waiver, will we hear back from the PUC soon or when do we hear? All right. And then with a waiver, will we hear back from the PUC soon? Or when do we hear back on that?
That's a good question. I would have to either to ask, to phone a friend on the actual, the regulatory side of it, or give back to you, Chair. It's usually, I think, within kind of a couple of months, as far as the timing of their review of all the waiver filings and, and all the, all the filings as well.
All right. So you'll just, you'll, you'll update us with the response when, whenever it comes in. All right. So is that the end of your report?
Yep, that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Anybody have any questions for Byron? Megan or Kimberly, do we have any members of the public that would like to ask Byron questions?
There's no written comments and there's no hands raised at this time.
I meant to say comments, not questions. All right, Byron, thank you.
Yep, great, thank you.
All right, let's move on to number, item number eight, adopt resolution to approve National City membership in STCP, San Diego Community Power, and that is our COO, Cody Huben.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Cody.
Hi. And so I have the next few items. They're both related. This first one obviously is to adopt a resolution to approve National City to join us as a member. So if you recall, we did this a couple of months ago with the county. Next slide, please. Just refresh your memory on the timeline. So we have adopted, your board adopted a new member policy just to set some criteria and parameters for how to even solicit or accept new members. And then we've done an analysis similar to the county for National City to understand the impacts and benefits to accepting them as a member. And of course, that showed favorable impact. I believe we reattached that report again tonight for those that want to take a look through it. And then National City in October voted first, if you recall, in your own cities, you have to adopt an ordinance to form a CCA. So they did that in October. And then November 2nd, they adopted our Joint Powers Authority, and they will be voting in December to appoint their board members. So of course, tonight, the action for you all is to formally adopt a resolution to accept them as a member. And then the next item that's related will be taking both the National City, assuming this item goes with the recommendation and the county of, will conduct our hearing to adopt an addendum to our implementation plan so that we could submit all that to the state and let them know what our plans are. Next slide, please. So just a couple of key facts about National City. Again, we did talk about this in the past. I won't belabor it, but they're, they're fairly small, about 3%, although they are pursuing climate action goals, just like everybody else, and the more the merrier. So we're excited to have them. And they add about 19,000 and some accounts to our service and net revenues. And the first two full years of service are about a million and a half dollars and 1.8 million dollars once they're fully enrolled. And then, of course, we'll likely enroll them. We're targeting spring of 2023, and I'll, I'll bring this up again later, that we're, we're required to have this year delay. So unfortunately, we can't enroll any customers in '22. And we're presenting April, but we'll, of course, revisit that as we get closer. Next slide, please. And then just, this is the recommendation to adopt the resolution. And just a reminder, two-thirds vote is required to authorize membership, and their effective date will be December 2nd. And so they and the county can both be seated in December with the rest of you and your board. And then this was in the staff report as well, but to remind you of the voting structure and how that changes. Although, also to remind you, you all have never actually used a weighted vote, even though we get asked this question a lot. So this is what the weight looks like. I believe this is the last slide for this item. And then that, that concludes this item. So the action is asking you to adopt the resolution.
Well, great. This is really exciting. Our, our, our seventh member, you know, and to be on our founding member agencies, this is just really exciting. I think it really, you know, is a testament to, to all the great work that, that your team, our team has, has done over the last couple of years and has really shown, you know, that we are an agency that is really on the move and, 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 and doing everything that we said we're going to do, which is basically moving toward 100% renewable energy, local decision-making, creating more jobs. And so this is, this is great. Just a couple of questions. So, so it is an addendum to our implementation plan, and we're going to, we're going to submit that to the state, to the PUC at the same time that we're submitting the counties?
Yeah, and I'll actually, that will be item nine. We'll talk about that a little bit more. But yes, it'll, it'll be joint.
All right. And so the other thing, too, is that I was just thinking about this, is just kind of geeking out here. But I would have thought that, that for, that National City would have been higher in terms of their, their load, energy load. They're, they're the size of La Mesa and Encinitas, but they have a lot of industry down there. Is it, why, why is it that they?
A good, a good question and very intuitive. So we were surprised, too, because they have a lot of waterfront industry. A lot of those businesses are actually on direct access service. So even though you would think they'd be a bigger energy load, a lot of those are served through direct contracts.
All right. And then with direct access, is there any ever a way to, to, to compete, to, to, to let those customers know, hey, you know, you have, you can, you can continue direct access or you can come to our Community Choice Energy Program, and here's the, the benefits of Community Choice Energy. Is there a way to reach out to those direct access customers?
Yeah, for sure. I think there's a couple of ways to do some outreach. One, obviously, is to demonstrate that we're a successful organization, so they'd like to join us. A lot of companies, as you know, are now developing corporate social responsibility or climate goals. And of course, we think that would attract them to us. There are also most, I believe, most, if not all of their businesses that are on direct access in National City specifically are part of the Port tenants and the Port Tenants Association. So we're planning to do some outreach to them as well, just to make sure they know who we are and the benefits of joining us.
Great, 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 great. Well, thank you for this presentation. Any questions for Cody? Do we have any, Megan or Kimberly, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
There are no written comments and there's no hands raised at this time.
All right. Well, then I will bring it back to the board. And if there are no other questions, oh, I see Director Tadina has a question.
No, I don't have a question.
All right. Did you want to move this item?
What, can we make a comment to gloat about how awesome and sustainable the southern southeastern portion of the San Diego Bay cities are the most sustainable region of the entire county, if not Southern California? So we're winning. So that's the most important thing. And number two, no one's ever accused Imperial Beach of being part of the 1%, but apparently we are now. So we're very proud. I want to thank Cody, obviously, the entire staff and the sports leadership for bringing National City into the coolest club in the world. So anyway, very happy to have them aboard and very excited about the fact that, once again, the South San Diego Bay is the most sustainable city region of, of the world. Thank you.
That's fair.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a, a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-04. Motion by Director Tadina and a second by Vice Chair Padilla. So let's vote.
Okay, alternate Director Humor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Dina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right. We are now up to seven members, guys. We're growing.
Congratulations.
That's awesome. We're taking the whole county with us. 100% renewable energy. All right, let's move on to item number nine, conduct public hearing to approve implementation plan addendum for new members. And that is Cody.
All right. So this is sort of a part two to the previous item. So this is required step as part of the California Public Utilities Commission. Once a city decides to go towards community choice, and if they choose, choose to do so through a joint powers authority like us, and we have to now tell the state that we're taking responsibility for serving this load. So it's a more of a formality. And then we're doing this through an addendum to our implementation plan that you all approved back, gosh, in just, I think, October of 2019. And so next slide, please. And just to remind you of our new member policy, this is some things that we look for in new members, and we really feel that both National City and the county, and hopefully some others, align with things like our mission and vision and goals. Supporting us now will have more force at the state level when we're advocating for regulatory and legislative activities. And then ensuring that the financial benefits align for not only existing customers, but for the new customers that we're bringing in. Next slide, please. So trying to make an addendum exciting, but it was really a struggle. But it's a requirement that there's.
Need pictures.
Right. And it's attached for your reading. It's not the most exciting thing, and what we did is really just update the key areas, things like electricity load, number of accounts, approximate enrollment dates, those things. We will be submitting it to the CPC, and if you recall, it has to be submitted by the end of the year, technically January 1st, but obviously that's a holiday in order for us to serve load in 2023. So we met our deadline. We're actually early. We're one month early from the end of the year. And we'll gather up the final remaining documents that are attached to this and submit that to the CPC, and we should hear back from them within 90 days of an approval. Next slide, please. Oops, back previous slide, I'm sorry. And then this, this is it. So this is our action. I think if it helps to see the wording, you can go back to the first slide where it describes the public hearing and the recommendation. But this is, these are the actions. So receiving the addendum itself, conducting a public hearing that's required to adopt the addendum, and then adopting the resolution that goes with this to approve the addendum so that we can submit it. Thank you.
All right, is that it?
That's it for me. So.
So I will officially, I don't have a gavel, but I'll slam on my desk. Ready? Public hearing, hearing is open. All right. Any questions for our staff? Or any comments? All right, let's go to the public. Megan or Kimberly, do we have any public comment on this item?
There are no written comments and no hands raised at this time.
All right, we'll give folks two seconds to raise their hand if they'd like to comment on this item. If not, I will bring it back to the Board of Directors. Any, any closing comments or questions? If not, then I will close the public hearing. All right. You didn't, you didn't hear my gavel, but I, I did gavel it. All right. Public hearing is closed, and I will entertain a motion as to the staff's recommendation.
I will move staff recommendation.
Awesome. We have a first and a second by Vice Chair Padilla. So let's vote.
Okay, alternate Director Humor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Dina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Great. So now we have the new members and a pathway to get them to become new members. Awesome. Right. Item number 10 was pulled by the staff, and that's going to appear on the December agenda. And so we'll move to, that was the last item. So we'll move to committee reports and updates. And, and we have an update on CEO search from our ad hoc committee, and Vice Chair Padilla is going to give that update.
Briefly, we'll be meeting this week again. Mr. Carnahan will be reviewing a proposal to interview a prospective candidate to bring to the board to retain as executive search services or pursuing an aggressive timeline to move the process forward as quickly and appropriately as possible so that we can get into the process. And that process will also, once we have the executive recruiter in place, be coming back to the board and then working with the ED to devise both an agency and community input framework so that we are being transparent, open, and as inclusive in the process as we possibly can be. And I don't know if Bill wants to add anything to that.
No, I don't know. We have, I, I won't, because my, my microphones aren't very good, so no comment.
All right. Any members of the, the Board of Directors like to comment on this item? Or give any guidance, thoughts? All right. Reports by our CEO, COO, or General Counsel, any reports? Thank you, by the way, Steve, for everything you and Bill Baber are doing on the ad hoc committee. Thank you.
We're both a little insane, but you already knew that. So thank you.
All right. Any, any reports?
Can we just confirm, Mr. Chair, that there were no public comments submitted for the prior item?
Megan, I'm sorry, Megan or Kimberly, were there any public comments on, on? Are you, Nicholas, are you saying on item number 11, update on CEO search?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that there weren't any submitted or hand raised.
There was no written comments, and there was, now, well, now there's a hand, a hand raised.
All right, let's, um, let's go to the hand raised, whoever that is.
Okay, it's Tara Hammond.
Aye.
Tara, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Thanks, Megan. I was just commenting that at our CAC meeting on Friday, Eddie was going to give our update during this portion. So I believe Chair Price is on the line. So I just wanted to flag that in case that wasn't known on the previous item, not what the slide is on.
So Tara, did you want to give a comment? Did you want to give public comment on this item?
It's my understanding Chair Price is going to. I can't, if he isn't available to, but he was on the meeting, was my understanding, to give this update. So I will defer to him.
All right, perfect. Um, let's, Megan, can we, can we allow Mr. Chair Price in the meeting if he's, if he's in, if he's attending and would like to speak?
Eddie, you should be able to speak at this time, or unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you and greetings, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. We had our meeting and we've kind of discussed the CEO search item. And we'd like to know, will a CAC member be part of the search committee for one? The solicitation period has been extended to Monday, the 15th, which was last Monday. So is there a rough timeline on when the new CEO is expected to start? And, and this is rather important, will the board amend the JPA to allow internal candidates to apply for the position? And so there's a few questions there. And I'd like to add, you know, respectfully, the CAC is here to represent our communities, our respective communities, and we're here to help make San Diego Community Power work and be successful. And, you know, recently, and there's been a number of times where we feel like we're just a, a box to be checked, that we're not really taken seriously or taken, taken heed to. And, you know, we, we, there, there are members on our committee that, not just me, but there's other members that have also, that have some feelings about this. And, you know, we'd like to straighten that out so that we can be as effective as possible in our communities and respected in our communities, as well as respected as members of this organization. So if you don't mind, I posed a, a number of questions, and if those could get answered, I would be greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Eddie. Just speaking, well, I think I could speak for the whole Board of Directors and say that I truly appreciate, appreciate you, Eddie, and everything that you do and the Community Advisory Committee does. And so we don't generally, this is a moment for public comment. It's not, it's not a moment for us to have a back and forth in terms of questions. But, but I'll receive this as chair, and I, let me, give me a chance, and I'll, I'll see if we can kind of untangle a couple of things. But I want to be careful, because none of these things are, except for the CEO search, are on the agenda. So let me, let me do this. Thank you for your comments. And again, we do appreciate everything that you do and everything that the entire Community Advisory Committee does. So thank you. So we have Vice Chair Padilla here. Bill Baber is also the other, the other half of the team. Did you want to just kind of, just talk a little bit about, maybe address some of the comments of Eddie Chair Price in terms of the, the process and, and how it will involve different stakeholders?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chair Price. And I would just echo the Chair's comment that I think, you know, to reiterate again, the entire board very much values and appreciates the advisory role that the CAC is designed to provide, and we want to make sure that as an organization, we're doing that well and providing support for all of those members in that role. As to whether and what the, you know, what, whether there be a member involved in the process, I, you know, I personally would anticipate that the, the ad hoc committee would recommend, after we have recruiter selected, that we would begin by working with that with an experienced executive recruiter and bringing their experience to the table and how they've gone out into community and gauge it. I would be surprised, but I cannot, you know, speak here. We'll make a decision for the full board, but that, that, there wouldn't be elements of advisory, community, and even staff representation in an advisory role at some point in the process. But that's something. There wouldn't be elements of advisory, community and even staff representation in an advisory role at some point in the process, but that's something. That the board yet has to. Determine. In terms of the timeline, you know, the submittal date with respect to the submittals by potential recruiters. And then once we get recruiter approved and onboard. You know, we intend to move fairly expeditiously and we can determine as a full board. An exact timeframe for submittal review and inter and going through the process, what that looks like. And where we hope to come out on the other end. So I think that's probably as much as I can say at this point into so much detail. I'll just go back. To the Chair. I think there may be some other things we may want to address.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Nicholas. I'm not sure that I can say much about, there was another point that he brought up about amending the JPA. I'm not sure that we can talk much about that under this item, but just wanted to. See what your response is.
Um, I, I'm happy to to make a few comments, Mr. Chair. I did notice that Director Montgomery, Montgomery steps hand was raised as well. Do you want me to? Go ahead or take comments first?
Well, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we just, you can make comment first and then I'll close out public comment and I'll come back to the board.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I understand there was a comment raised and alluded to. Relating to to candidates for the position. And I, I believe that's in reference to. Prior comments that have been made as well to the board. Regarding Miss Hooven's potential appointment to the role. So. I can provide a brief statement based on information that's publicly available to date. In early twenty twenty, as the board knows, that the board initiated a recruitment for the permanent CEO position. In September of that year, S G C P publicly reported that the board was prepared to offer. The position to Miss Hooven, but that it was precluded from doing so. Based on advice of counsel after the Fair Political Practices Commission issued a formal advice letter. Concluding that she could not be the CEO due to a conflict of interest under Government Code Section ten ninety. For those not familiar, the Fair Political Practices Commission is the state agency that has jurisdiction to interpret and to provide advice. To public agencies and to public officials about conflict of interest issues, including section ten ninety. And in that situation, the F P P C determined that Miss Hooven was precluded from the CEO position. Because she was considered to have participated in the making of the contract for the position itself. The opinion is publicly available, the document, so I, I won't get into detail on the. The underlying facts or the reasoning that the F P P C used. But ultimately, that was the conclusion that the involvement in the, in making the JPA's final. JPA agreement. She could not serve as the CEO of the organization as a result of that. Respectfully, I can't comment on other issues as, as they may be confidential or subject to attorney client privilege. And involve the sort of ongoing recruitment process that we're in. That said, as acknowledged here, the recruitment process is underway and it's in the hands of our. Subcommittee that we're hearing from tonight. And I know that the subcommittee is going to continue to report back. To the board and to the members of the public on this as, as this continues to move forward.
All right. Thank you, Assistant General Counsel. All right, let's, let's move it back to the board. And one more round of public comment, any, one more round of comments if there are some, and I see Director Montgomery step has her hand up. So I'm going to call on her.
I, I just first is a sort of a point of order. I think I heard from Tara that she thought that a CAC update was actually on the agenda. And I also remember, I, I don't see it, but I do remember. Or feel like we used to provide that and that we haven't been doing that lately. So. I, I think in order for us to have a robust discussion in the event that there are. Things that the recommendations from the committee, that that should be an agendized item. I just, I may be remember it wrong, but I. I feel like we used to do that. So that would be one thing so that we don't have to, you know, limit the. The conversation because right now I don't see it agendized. So. The, the next thing I want to. Point out is I believe that we also had a committee member. As a part of the. Process last time, the hiring process. It was not, you know, the, the final decision making stage, but it, there was a, it would, a member was a part of the process, I believe. And so I would recommend that we, as much as possible, stick, stick to that. I know we are on a strict timeline, but we have done it before. And I think for consist, purposes of consistency, that would be good for us to do it again. The, the last thing is, you know, we did hear a formal request, well. I won't say it was formal, but it certainly was a request that came. Via the Chair of CAC to this board. About. Whether or not we will agendize an item. And I, I, I think that there should be a formal process for that request, whether we do, whether we, whether the answer is yes or no. I, I do feel we should shore up some of the processes that we have. With our Community Advisory Committee, especially if there is a feeling that there, that folks are getting discouraged on that end. So I would love to just explore. Ways to to better engage. On a way that, in a way that it makes folks feel that they are heard and that we are, you know, at least, at the very least, providing. Answers to their, to their questions or their requests. Whether or not they're yes or no. So that, that's all that I would say and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I do know that, that and. I know that we've gone through multiple drafts of this agenda and how it kind of flows and it's put together and. Even tonight, I'm kind of looking at it and a bit confused and of how like information reports are between the consent calendar. So I think it's been. Evolving for several months and, and I think it's going to continue to go through some evolu- evolutions. And I think it, there may have been. At some time that we had. Reports from the, the risk and finance and community advisory, which I don't see on that carrot anymore. But point well taken. I'm wondering. Bill Carnahan, if you're, if you're on the line, I'm wondering if you can. Do us, if you could meet with, with the, the Chair and Chair of, of the Community Advisory Committee and maybe even the Vice Chair, because she's on the line as well. Maybe meet with them and, and kind of chat about how we can, how we can. How we can, first of all, listen to any concerns that they have and how can we address those concerns? I want to make sure that we're working together. And things that they're discussing are, are heard by this Board of Directors, because we want to make sure that, I mean, that we're one. We're one agency, we're one team working together. So if you could.
I would be happy to.
All right, perfect. And then, yeah, and then let's see if we can address Director Montgomery steps comment as well. About giving, making sure that the Community Advisory Committee has, has a voice in these meetings. And I've never cut off Chair Price. He can speak.
Will do.
Although I think that's a good point because I don't, because we want to be fair to all public speakers and, and I don't want to basically give one person. More time than, than another. And then the other person comes up and says, how come you didn't give me, you know, five minutes? And then, then I'm looking like I'm. Discriminating against the content of their speech. So I just want to be careful with that.
Realize it has been, is the agenda has been floating around and we're trying to reach an optimum point on the agenda. If you notice, I gave the, the CAC's, the staff version of what they were up to last week and I listened into their meeting. And they had a robust debate on what they should do and controlling size. I think the intent was they were, they're bringing it back next week. For board action. And at that point, it will be on the agenda. So that they can present it and ask you to vote on what their recommendation is. So tonight, we're just kind of an update report. Because it wasn't ready for primetime yet, but next meeting would, it would be, and it would be an agendized item and. And we would expect the CAC Chair or whoever they designate to make that presentation on their behalf. So it's a little bit of timing, I think, too. So.
All right, perfect. All right. Any other comments on this item from my colleagues? All right, let's move back to, did, did our. General Counsel, Assistant General Counsel or CEO have anything to report under reports by management in General Counsel?
I have no report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I have no report.
All right, perfect. Let's move to board member comments. Any board members have any comments? All right, the only comment that I have is have a, have a really nice Thanksgiving. I hope you enjoy some really amazing time with your family and just really relaxing downtime and, and eat too much. All right. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Something to say.
Say again.
Chair had something, I'm sorry.
Steve, did you want it? Did you have something to say?
Oh, thank you, Member Montgomery step. I was going to just say what the Chair said is, you know. We work hard and we have a lot that we're called to do because this is a column for most of us and. Last, this past year and continues, I just, I do a lot of personal reflection. I want to say on the record, I'm. Even when we all agree or don't agree and we're working through problems, I so value each and every one of my colleagues. Great affection and respect for each and every one of you. I feel so privileged and, and fortunate. To be able to be at this table and I'm grateful for all the people that participate with us and the work that we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Very nice, Steve. Thank you.
I'm grateful for you guys, too. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Bye, have a nice, have a nice evening.